All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to, what is it, November 3rd, Newburgh City Council. This is a joint work session with the Planning Commission. Welcome to you guys. Rachel, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly, at this time, we're just going to do a roll call of council. We'll do a planning roll call right before that portion of the meeting. councillor McBride?
Here.
Councillor Wheatley?
Here.
Councillor Johnell Halliman?
Here.
Councillor Kilburg is absent. Mayor Rossaker is here.
Here.
Sorry, I'm saying it for you. Councillor Turgerson?
Here.
And councillor Carmen?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I call this meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Worthy, could you do the honors, please?
Honorable mayor and council, this is the city manager's report of events for October 2025. Smashing community development happenings. Daycare expansion at Northwest Christian Church Design Review Approval Final. That is a culmination of the System Development Charge Committee's work. It is the actualization of a dream. Wood. Many other wonderful things happened, including, of course, the 1537 UGB expansion work is going on. And it's very challenging, of course, dealing with that branch of our state government, but we're trying. Hayworth Springbook Apartments, 28 units, previously approved, moving ahead. And in community engagement, many wonderful happenings. Volunteer committee recruitments continuing, collaborating with finance to send out an email to water bill customers about upcoming changes to email system. Worked with engineering to promote a community survey. And there's more. Teamed up with myself and the GIS analyst Alan and the school district to create and promote a survey to gather data to help estimate incoming student numbers. Pushed a press release from Public Works. Hosted PSU students from the International City County Managers Association. And made some cool signs so we all know what room we're in when we're having a meeting. Wood. Here is the ICMA cohort. And here is the gorgeous sign who was designed by, it was designed by... Was it Emily? It was designed by Emily. I forgot. Here is the staff award ceremony 2025. Congratulations to the Layman Award winner Audrey Smith. Innovator of the Year Alan McKeel, who's now utilizing AI technology in looking at maps in many different ways. And the Rookie of the Year Eastern Junkin. And the whole team for being brilliant. NDPD goings on. Providence got coffee and treats for Coffee with a Cop. And the chief and captain Simmons attended a downtown Newburgh Members Mixer. Helping local small businesses understand how to access community policing for all of our benefits. And there's more. Officer Fergus helping a Newburgh citizen change attire. Because, of course, he did. And congratulations to Officer Maxfield, who graduated from DPSST Academy. And will finish up his training here at the PD before going solo. Administration, CR's office pulled out off that very successful event. Finalized the records policy. Bought the chairs that you're sitting on, since we noticed the old ones were collapsing. Maybe we took fiscal conservatism a bit too far. Began annual committee recruitment. Finalized details for the city-county dinner on November 5th. And conducted record trainings for community development and capital engineering staff. And capital engineering. The groundwater treatment plant filter covers, which were, as you know, put upon us by the state as another unfunded mandate. Are underway with the steel buildings to cover the basins. Delivery expected December. Final submittal approval is nearly complete for the fabric building that will cover the other two contact basins. All of which is based upon dubious science. More from capital engineering. A CCTV map has been prepared by Keller for pipes that will be inspected. To be used with a map to prepare requests for bids to complete CCTV work as part of that process. And city staff have made great strides installing, testing, and monitoring city flow meter equipments. And to get ready for the rainy months in January and February. And of course, the rain that's here already. Good grief, that's a lot of things that finance did. So because of some illness and some other issues, Katie, the finance director, had to be on the billing counter all day long today on a very busy day, as well as her other duties. So she was excused from being here this evening because she was exhausted. But there were many other things that made her exhausted. Participated in the ICMA visit. Attended Brown and Brown Insurance Quarterly Review. Had interviews for a new bilingual finance clerical assistant. Attended FEMA training. Tyler tutoring sessions for many staff. And of course, last week, having the auditors here and giving them everything they wanted as quickly as possible. Kuschunk. HR collaborated with forensic detective Sheldon Clay for the fifth lunch and learn of the year on cybersecurity. Where we learned about all the ways RFID scammers are trying to steal the data from our cards. Which was a little alarming. I would say make sure you've all got one of those protected purses or wallets these days. Because it was very illuminating how easy it is for them to steal your information. Allison joined the city manager and other department heads for a day with the PSU students. Open enrollment for 2026 Medical Dental Vision Life, open September 30th, closed October 24th. And the city continues to be able to offer its employees best-in-class benefits. Better than any of the other cities that we are neighbors with. IT. Okay. We are all hoping this is going to go really well. We are cutting over tomorrow to our new three gigabyte feed pipe into the city. Most of it should be done in the wee hours of the morning. So we're hoping it will be an uneventful but faster day tomorrow. And many other things were done. The Azure virtual desktops are coming. We've had a lot of issues because it's hard. We're troubleshooting. We're taking your time. We're not rolling out the new desktops until they are ready. But there's more. The Windows 11 upgrades, which were forced upon us because people don't like Windows 11, they preferred Windows 10. We're still rolling with the punches on that one. Self-service password reset. Honorable councillors, if you'd like to reach out to IT and ask about self-service password reset. I've been told the project is complete. But I've asked Dave when he will be getting new information about that, which should be coming soon on how to do it. And staff can now use Microsoft Authenticator to reset those passwords without having to get help from the IT help desk. Library land. The front entrance of the library. We're waiting on the railings inspections before we can open the front entrance. We ask folks to continue to be patient while enjoying the alternative entrance. I was able to fill in for storytime on October the 22nd. When I was very lucky that many staff were at the FEMA training. And I was ordered by the library director to use the picture of me at storytime, which I have done. The library received funding from the Austin Family Foundation to purchase books at the Guadalajara Book Fair. Library staff are gearing up for all ages cozy reading program. And the annual kids craft sale will be held in the library December 6th, as we do every year. And there's me having fun. I love it when I get to sub in for storytime. And I also have a special song that I have developed, which I will not inflict upon you right now. But thank goodness for all staff FEMA training. Public Works highlights, emergency management, the FEMA training I just mentioned. So many staff attended the 300 and 400 series, getting their certifications up to snuff. Lots of maintenance happened. Stormwater runoff pipes cleaned. And you've seen our sweeper zooming around, picking up leaves as fast as it can. Lots of debris removed. Davs exercised, fleet equipment service repairs done. And from operations, reuse water at the golf course was running hot. Now that's turned off for the winter. Lab staff completed the annual study for discharge monitoring report quality assurance. Which is one of the ways that we monitor our discharges. Make sure that they meet the requirements of the NPDES permit from the state. And screw press number one's gearbox seized onto the shaft of the screw press. It is destroyed. As quickly as we can, we have a new gearbox coming. In the meantime, we're doing things very manually. And of course, this happened right at the time of the clarifier test, capacity test, because of course it did. So we're going to be running some overtime while we do this test, which we have to do while the rains are coming. Started building a new conveyor chain and replaced failed parts on the lift station controller at the Sheriden Lift Station. And for those of you at home who don't know, all through the city, there are pump stations and lift stations that move fresh water and bring back the other stuff. Some water treatment plant going on. Wellhouse 3 was moved to enable the abandonment of that old location. A brine pump was rebuilt. Acid wash was done on hypochlorate generator, which we use, so we don't have to store deadly chlorine onsite. Polymer pumps were serviced. Got quotes for the well field SCADA replacement project, which we're going to be working on in the future. And in maintenance, lots and lots of concrete work. Two years of ADA projects were completed. Now we are turning our attention to the ADA work for 2526, which we have to do to get ahead of next summer's repaving projects. And as you know, we did seven times more street sections than we did last year. We're probably going to do about the same next year if we can keep ahead of this. Now, this is a big deal because there's about 60 ADA ramps we have to build. And they all have to be built before the grind in Nlay next year. So we're going to be really going fast. Here is East Thornton Street paving before and after. And the guys used the highly economical drag box method to make a basic road surface to fill in the potholes. Hydrant meter repair and maintenance, Ninth and College. Holy Street Water Leak Repair. And I saved the most important part of public works happening until the last. For me, it is a bittersweet announcement I have to share with council. After serving Newburgh for over 45 years in every role, from entry level to public works director. Russ Thomas has notified the city manager of his intention to retire effective March 2nd, 2026. Now, I know that many adventures and fun times lie ahead for Russ and Mary Lynn. But I need to say a bit more on the record about this beloved man and friend. Russ has been a champion of the Newburgh community since his very first day. He showed up for work setting example of the strive ethics that everybody could follow. Did you know that he was instrumental in creating our values? Russ is quoted on the cover of the city's customer service handbook. A customer service handbook that other cities should have a read at. Reminding us, treat people like they're your own grandparents. But it's not just Newburgh who knows his sterling qualities. The American Public Works Association recognized Russ for his legacy of service. Russ has dedicated his life to public service, beginning with his enlistment in the US Navy in 1973. Finding his way to the city of Newburgh as a laborer in 789. Then Russ worked his way up the ladder to his current position as our public works director. This was recognized by the Oregon Chapter President, Tim Blackwood. Russ's commitment to the public works profession overall and the Oregon Chapter is unparalleled. Please, everybody, show your appreciation to my mentor and my friend, Director Thomas. So that's it for our October happenings. As you can see, the residents' tax dollars have been hard at work as usual and service matters here. Any questions, folks? Including any that you may want to ask Russ.
Russ, I know that the council and the members in the audience would like to hear you, anything that you have to say to us.
How much time do you have? No, I really appreciate the words by Will and everyone's appreciation. As many people know, I've spent a lifetime in community service in this community. Doing everything from coaching Little League, in which I have two members on the maintenance staff. I was their T-ball coach. To from the bottom of the ditch to the office. It's been a fantastic career. A lot of fantastic people. And I appreciate the support by the staff, the other department heads, and by the city council, not only this year, but in years past. So I appreciate the kind words and look forward to what comes ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. We still have quite a bit of time, but of course, you're going to be missed. We appreciate what you have done for the city all these years. Next item on the agenda today is public comments. We have two. The first one is Jessie. You're going to have to help me out. Ferris Cunningham, is that right? Welcome.
Good evening. For the record, I had requested a short ADA accommodation under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Because my adaptive pacing runs about four minutes in the website information. And just because of last week's commentary, I wasn't sure if we were set or where we were. I understand the council has been considering a three-minute commitment for efficiency. And I appreciate that tonight's time limit remains at five. I'd just like to ask when time limits do change. Access and pacing are part of that conversation, too. My name is Jessie Ferris Cunningham. I'm a fourth generation Oregonian, now living within the last three years in District 5. Though I grew up in Washington County, these Yam Hill roads have housed my family members, too. And I've always felt like my second home. So this conversation is personal. I'm not here to add noise. I'm here to share what life looks like from the ground up and how we might steady it together. I was raised on bootstraps and plain talk. And I was also a disabled kid before the ADA existed. I've spent my life learning how to make broken systems stretch just enough for people like me to survive inside of them. And how to pick myself and my family up after being dropped by them. At the last council meeting on October 20th, you discussed letting computer voices read comments instead of people. For some of us, that change isn't procedural. It's personal. Sometimes I can't attend. I go nonverbal. Sometimes it's raining, dark, and dangerous to play car frogger in a wheelchair just to get here. Those aren't choices. They're realities I can't plan for, and I'm not alone. As I learned in preparing for tonight, that new rule would now require for disabled residents to disclose their disability in advance. Just to have their words read by another human voice. That's not equal access. That's conditional access. That's not just a feeling. Under Title II of the American with Disabilities Act, public programs have to be equally accessible by default. Not only after someone discloses a diagnosis. The Department of Justice makes it clear. Public entities can ask what help is needed, but they cannot make people reveal why they need it. In plain language, access shouldn't depend on outing yourself first. Do our words matter less because our bodies won't cooperate? When a machine reads our words, it tells us our participation is a checkbox, not a presence. Accessibility isn't a convenience, it's dignity. No one should have to disclose a disability or file early just to have their words heard by another human being. If reading comments aloud is a heavy lift for staff, perhaps consider a rotating accessibility liaison. Someone ensuring that every resident's voice, digital or physical, is treated with respect. Protect against vulgarity, yes, but don't mechanize belonging. We all care about this town. And we're already paying for systems that don't fit everyone. Through emergency rooms, shelters, police calls, mental health crisis, and burned-out neighbors trying to hold what the systems are dropping. None of us want that. We all want a community where doing the right thing isn't harder than doing nothing. I'm not here as a side. I'm here as a neighbor, a human, reminding us that every policy eventually lands in a real person's lap. And that person could be any of us. For anyone who'd like to check out the sources I've mentioned, I do have them listed. It's 42 USC, Section 12132. 28 CFR, Section 34, 35.130. And the DOJ Title II Technical Assistance Manual, Section 2-36100 and 2-38000. They're all public, easy to find, worth a look. Thank you for your time and remembering that access is a civic value, not just a technical feature. I did have a short, maybe a simple policy line. I know legal and all of that stuff. But if it could read something like, written comments can be read, would be read by a human. Unless the writer specifies and is okay for electronic disability or electronic reading. No one should have to disclose a disability to be included. Thank you for your consideration and time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Brandon Sliders.
Good evening, Brandon Slider here, resident of Newburgh. I've been speaking with the city manager lately about the Sister City program that we have. We've got one in Japan and one in Austria. And some of you may already know about an upcoming delegate trip to Poistorf, Austria. And I've been moving into kind of a coordinator role to help organize kind of that relationship and the travel. So some of you should have already received an email from me. But if you could consider coming to our meeting this Thursday, November 6th, at 6:00 PM, at the Chamber of Commerce building. And we'll be discussing that delegate trip and travel and just kind of making sure we can tell the Poistorf Committee how many people to expect. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. But ultimately, I just want to stress how important I think these kinds of relationships are for a city. To have these kind of international connections are really unique. And they open up our eyes. They give us the opportunity to learn about other cultures, experience new things, and ultimately kind of strengthen our relationships with one another and, I don't know, just give us cool experiences. So that's all I have for tonight, but please email me if you have any questions. Otherwise, if you have a question now, I'm available, but.
I just want to say I'm so excited that you're doing this and that we have someone that's taking the lead. That's really exciting and I'll be there.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is the work session about the sidewalk, the new street cross-section designs. One of the things that we've noticed earlier this year is sometimes when items come to you guys and then come to us. We haven't had any, shared any information about these. And of course, the only way we can do this policy is in open meeting. So this is something I decided to try, to get, let the Planning Commission weigh in. Have an opinion, have a seat at the table while we discuss this item. Then it's going to come up at your next meeting and it will ultimately come back to us for the final vote. So welcome. It's good to see you guys. Thanks for what you do. We are volunteers, very important. So the next item on our agenda is...
Roll call of Planning Commission. Are you ready for that?
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Ricker is absent. Commissioner Dale?
Here.
Commissioner Maverick is absent. Commissioner Wright? Ah, make sure the Zoom volume's up. Chris, I'm not hearing you, but it looks like you, Chris Wright is here, present online. So if you need to chat us or something like that, please do. Commissioner Newton Curtis is absent. Commissioner Mansfield?
Present.
And Commissioner Vio Pendle?
Present.
Thank you.
I'll lead off. Honorable Commissioners, Councillors, and Mayor. Tonight's item is a discussion item and information about a joint work session that we're doing on cross-sections. Reviewing the possibility of curb-tight sidewalks also. While no ORS or OAR prevents curb-tight sidewalks in Oregon. DEQ and city design standards do require a certain level of treatment prior to discharging stormwater into the stormwater system. Meaning that there must be some local level of pretreatment that is in situ rather than downstream. This is a discussion item. No recommendation is offered as we review the possibilities. However, there are some responses from our honorable engineers from Keller on curb-tight sidewalks provided by way of Attachment 1, which was in the packet. Is the hope of staff that we can achieve a consensus on the issue this evening? Prior to the Planning Commission meeting set for Thursday, the 13th of November. In summary, an agenda request was made to have a joint session of city council and Planning Commission to consider this possibility. In an earlier presentation, the need for more flexible cross-sections for the city in general terms was reviewed with an examination of those possible cross-sections. Simply because, ladies and gentlemen, we felt that our toolbox was bereft of some of the tools that would be useful. That is added to this packet also as Attachment 2 update with TSP cross-sections. All of this work was conventionally budgeted to include the TSP update, which was part of the current biennium budget. And of course, the council goals that are relevant is Goal 4, to create and maintain a high level of transparency with residents to build trust. As well as ensuring that Newburgh's infrastructure, roads, water, city employees are in good repair and supply. And to focus and to focus on road and sidewalk improvements in District One and Three. That is tangentially related to this issue, depending on what we do. So with that, I'm going to pass things over to the experts in the room from Keller. And could the city recorder most kindly bring up the memo so that we can address that together?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Councilors, Commissioners. Um, for those who don't know me, my name is Travis Smith. I work with Keller Associates. I am the acting city engineer. Um, I have brought along with me tonight two of my colleagues. Um, first is TJ Centani. He is the design lead. He's actually our regional uh, transportation manager, um, taking the design lead for this effort to evaluate potential typical sections for the city. Um, also brought Ryan Retzlaff, who is one of our resident uh, stormwater experts. So as both of those play into this conversation, I wanted them handy to be able to answer questions that I'm not familiar with either. So I've been floating a little bit more on the surface. These guys have been into the details. So I will go ahead and run through the memo here, and then I think, are we taking questions after that? Is that?
Um, I would, I would suggest that after we go through the memo, then the Honorable Mayor would guide it from there on any Q and A or discussions.
Okay, I agree. Yeah, so in response to the discussion surrounding typical sections having planter strips versus being a curb tight, we provided a few initial thoughts. So first, uh, to address site development and code requirements. So as Will mentioned, there aren't any specific code requirements that ORS dictates that require planter strips to be installed. Um, however, the most significant challenge that is created with curb tight construction is how to appropriately handle stormwater. So Oregon DEQ and city design standards require a certain level of pretreatment prior to discharging stormwater to waters of the state. There are essentially two ways to accomplish this, um, and we'll run through them very generally here. So first is construction of localized treatments in planters. This is feasible for most development projects with short frontages that these types of typical sections are typically applied to. Uh, second is discharge to a regional water quality treatment facility, a larger facility, as you can imagine. These are only really feasible for a new large project where these types of facilities can be constructed. Um, diving a little bit deeper into the localized planners, they may be placed behind a curb tight sidewalk. See example below. However, there are some challenges that are created when this happens. Uh, one of those challenges is the grading and constructability. It requires the construction of trench drains to convey the water through the curb tight sidewalk. It also complicates maintenance uh, for public work since they will have to work across the backside of the sidewalk to maintain the planter and the trench drains. The, this can result in unsightly localized treatment on the property owner's side of the sidewalk, which is generally less well received by the public than having back of walk at the right of way line. To mitigate sidewalk panel damage from root growth, uh, selection of appropriate deep rooting trees that are not prone to overgrowth in a five-foot wide planter strip can effectively keep long-term damage to a minimum. Linear root barriers are another option that can be employed to install along each side of the planter strip that will force any laterally growing roots to grow down instead of out. Second, planter strips also double as a necessary safety feature of the roadway cross-section. Planner strips provide a buffer between people walking and vehicles. This width is critical to maintain sidewalk users' sense of safety and is fundamental, and is a fundamental metric measured in a pedestrian level of stress analysis. And the pedestrian level of stress method in the, that follows from the Highway Capacity Manual. And as you can imagine, with the recently constructed Crestview Green facility that's just as you're coming into town, if you put the pedestrians immediately adjacent to the highway, they would be feeling that much more so, as an example, where we do actually have that buffer, so. The planner strip provides a buffer space that effectively serves several uses. Um, buffer space for a step-out zone for people exiting vehicles. This removes a hazard of people opening car doors into people using the sidewalk. Space for street trees that provide shade to users, enhancing the comfort of people walking outside. Also provides space for lighting and street furniture without encroaching on sidewalk widths or property owner right-of-way. And I believe I skipped the second bullet. The second bullet um, is that planner strips allocate more room in a street cross-section for crosswalk ramps to be developed, reducing the steepness of sidewalk ramps and facilitating the designed sidewalk landings at the top of the sidewalk ramps without encroaching into the adjacent properties, which is always a significant challenge. Broadly, these buffers are a critical element of vibrant urban streetscapes. To summarize, again, there are not ORS codes restricting sidewalk from being curb tight. However, due to treatment requirements for stormwater, it does make curb tight walk more complicated to execute, difficult to maintain, potentially unsightly for property owner, and is left safe for pedestrians.
All right. Does anybody have questions, comments to make?
May I, Mr. Mayor? Uh, so it sounds like from what you're saying here that city staff is not in favor of a change to curb tight sidewalks? Or are you in favor of having that as an option?
So uh, this would. Um, the sections that were proposed, this has all been done with staff. So this wasn't an effort on our own part. There's been several collaborative meetings. So all, everything that's been proposed thus far is from staff as well.
All right. I'm not so much talking about the conclusion, or I'm not so much talking about who did it. I'm talking about what the conclusion is saying. Are you saying, are you concluding that, that you don't want to make a change with this, or you're concluding that you want to have an option? Or what is it that staff, or what is, what is it that you're saying with this?
If you want to.
If I understand it correctly, we're just wanting to update the slew of options new construction has in our code of the types of sidewalks they can build.
Yeah, yes, I'm just seeing the tone of this as that they're against it.
Excuse me.
Sorry, sorry.
Jason has a question, made a question to the staff, so let them answer it before we move on. Thank you.
Counselors, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm TJ Centani. Uh, he, Travis introduced me, but just some context on the background on this. Uh, so uh, the background of being asked to develop additional typical sections came originally from a request from Will, um, for flexibility. Your current sections are pretty restrictive on what's available. Um, after an initial presentation, it's my understanding there was some questions about why there wasn't a curb tight option included. Uh, the options that are in your packet uh, are all separated with a planter strip. So the, this conclusion, uh, and the entire purpose of this memo was to summarize uh, the advantages and disadvantages of a curb tight option, why we should consider or not consider it. And it is definitely our recommendation that uh, in the, in the summary, that there are more advantages to having a separated sidewalk than there is a curb tight sidewalk, and it's not as clear as just simply saying it's slightly cheaper to construct a curb tight construction. Um, once you consider all the elements associated with stormwater, uh, streetscape design, and then also ADA and safety.
And, and frankly, folks, I didn't know enough about this, so I asked them to write a memo to summarize the pros and cons.
Thank you. I think that answers.
Well, I was thinking along the same lines as you were, uh, Jason, and I, so it sounds like to me, I mean, this is an option we just set aside. I mean, it's, is, that's kind of what I'm gathering out of this. Doesn't sound like it's going to be a very good option, in my opinion. To, to use the, the curb tight. I mean, they're, that's what they're saying, you know, it's not really a good option at the last paragraph here, and it talked about it up, up uh, up in the beginning here too, so I, I mean, it looks nice, but it sounds like it's going to be more maintenance-heavy. So I, I don't want that to be part of the, of the process.
Two questions. Um, are there any positives about this? I didn't hear one, but maybe you have one that's not written down? And then um, where does the right-of-way go? Like, who's responsible for the sidewalks? Is it the property owners? Is it the city?
Thanks for your question, Counselor. Um, so i- in the context of uh, what we're talking about today, where we're applying this oftentimes by developers on small frontages that are looking to improve uh, smaller parcels, I would say generally there, there isn't uh, one single advantage to curb tight that I would point to because you still have to deal with your stormwater. Um, there are parts of the city that have existing stormwater systems that um, you may decide to make. Oh, yeah, let me just slide that forward. Is that better? Yeah. Um, existing stormwater systems where you may decide that um, that that may be allowed to be utilized, um, but then you may have a single section that uh, is different than the rest of what you're, you're generally developing throughout the city. So uh, to answer your question on kind of individual projects, I wouldn't say there's one single advantage to a curb tight construction. Um, if you were doing a large linear project, maybe a capital improvement project, you could probably design around a curb tight and find some sort of um, advantages as far as cost goes. Um, but again, there's maintenance considerations, trench drains. You still have to deal with the stormwater in that application as well. And could you remind me your second question? What was that?
Just the right-of-way, who's now responsible, because normally that that spaces in the sidewalk is like the homeowner, right? But.
Yeah, so typically.
Property owner.
Yeah, so the, typically you'd want the city's stormwater controls to be within your own right-of-way, um, that the city owns. Uh, where it gets a little tricky is when you do put uh, planners behind a curb tight sidewalk. Uh, it, while it's still within your right-of-way, uh, it can be less clear to homeowners about where that line actually falls. It's pretty clear when it's the back of a sidewalk. It's less clear when you have treatment facilities behind a sidewalk. Um, treatment facilities can get overgrown. It can become unsightly to uh, homeowners. So generally speaking, you, you want that within your own right-of-way that the city owns, but once you move it back behind the walk, uh, there's more opportunity to intermingle with property owners, and then um, it's just not as clear about where that line falls.
Question here. So it seems like the one advantage of a, of a curb tight is space, right? Would that be the, the only advantage that's coming in? Because if there's future development and we have mandate on the amount of space for cars, for parking, or for bike lanes, then the overall limitations that, that planter area that you're recommending has all these advantages, that becomes the restriction?
Yeah, there can be a, an advantage if you're in a tight space condition. Um, that being said though, typically when you've got a development project that you're permitting, you have an opportunity to require some sort of right-of-way to accommodate that. Um, it, it uh, you, again, not to repeat myself, but you still have to deal with the stormwater. So even if you're space restricted, you may have to get creative in how you do that uh, with a curb tight or a, a, a non-curb tight option, but the same challenges remain.
Maybe more question for Will. Is this proposal related to uh, any improvement of existing uh, sidewalks? So if a, if a citizen has a, you know, cracked sidewalk and they got to repair it, we put through and so wait, that one's curb tight, and now we're saying no curb tight. So you gotta take up six feet of your land and, and put in some plants?
For clarity for folks listening at home, no, no, and no. Um, if we have conditions that are currently curb tight, we're going to maintain them as they are. And thi- this, this is thinking about future developments and of the larger scale. We're not talking about the sort of spot repairs that we do with the sidewalk team or our annual tough budget. This would be the, you'd have Crestview Crossing type thinking.
And then are we creating any opportunity for conditional requests of these new constructions to put in curb tight or partial curb tight where one side of the street has the frontage and the other side doesn't and is curb tight?
Well, I think I'm going to defer to my honorable colleague Scott um, on that one. I mean, I imagine a person could make a conditional request of any sort. And a cat can look at a king, right? But it, it may not meet muster, I'm assuming.
What was your question specifically, Commissioner Mansfield?
My question was if, if we were to, Planning Commission was proposing to council based off of what we're hearing today and council were approved to not have. Yes, so in a condition where, you know, we propose that there is no curb tight option that the city reckon, recognizes is available or viable for construction, could a new development come through pushing a, I guess, a conditional use to say, hey, in this layout, we'd like to use curb tight for this area of, of the development? And is that still a process in place? Or uh, yeah, how, how would that work?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It's a good question. So I, any time through the development review process and the review of public improvement plans, uh, the city engineer has authority to approve design variances, but that wouldn't be a standard. That would be an exception that would, would occur where, you know, there were some physical constraint or some engineering basis for not requiring the separated sidewalk. But then they'd have to find a stormwater solution elsewhere. Once, there, there is one provision in our code currently, and it's a, it's a, it's an alternative process for um, affordable housing developments where certain design exceptions can be granted. And one of those is a curb tight sidewalk. Little known, it's there. I don't believe it's ever been exercised, but it's a provision that is an incentive for affordable housing construction. But again, that would require an alternative design solution for stormwater, so. And it may, it may turn out to be more expensive, in fact, doing it that way, so we don't know. Uh, I hope that answers your question, Commissioner.
So nobody has talked about what stormwater is. Um, stormwater is a water basically that comes off the roof of your house and has to be treated before it goes into our stormwater system. Now, I recognize that currently we're, we're doing a lot of light of boxes in the right-of-way, which uh, defeats the purpose of the, the whole tree question. But this is a fairly new change. There are a lot of light of boxes in this city that are next to the foundation of the house. Uh, some are beside the house, between the houses. Uh, they don't all go in the, in the, in the curb, uh, in that area. And frankly, I, I don't know why it would be more expensive to put it in there than it is to put it in the, the public right-of-way. We're talking about just treating the, the amount of water that comes off of your roof. We tend to go overboard on our light uh, uh, requirements. And by the way, the light of requirements change very, very often. Uh, I remember one uh, builder designed it three different times. It was approved by the city. Other builders, uh, they told other builders, go out and, and do it like that builder did. And the next guy that did that submitted his permit and was told that that was no longer acceptable and he had to do it a different way. So uh, I, you know, yes, I, I look at the light of boxes on College Street, and those to me look like crib hazards, uh, especially on the sidewalk with that curb there and then a hole on the other side. I've always been surprised that nobody's ridden a bicycle in there and, and had a, an issue with that. We do do curb sidewalk, I mean, curb tight. Uh, the city just put curb tight sidewalks right over here in Memorial Park. And so there are exceptions to that. And that's basically what I was after was options, you know, why do we, why is this so rigid? Why do we, why do we have to have trees in a planter strip? I mean, I know that you think that the new list of trees is going to be just an accessible, but I, I'm very skeptical. I'm, I'm older than a lot of people in this room. I've been dealing with construction here. Uh, I've been tripping over bad sidewalks in this city for years. We literally have millions of dollars worth of sidewalks that need to be repaired because of tree, tree roots. So for me, the issue is not the light of box. Uh, I mean, the builder can find a different place to put, to put the stormwater treatment for his house. The question for me is, why not have an option to allow that to happen? Uh, I would prefer to see trees in the front yards where they belong rather than out on the uh, the sidewalks. The city also has a bit of a, a maintenance problem with these trees. Because if you have a tree growing in the planter strip, the public right-of-way in front of your house, you have to cut that tree eight feet above the sidewalk and thirteen foot above the, the road surface. But very few people do that, so the city ends up going and hacking trees all the time. Uh, we don't do a nice job of it. We just hack them, right, Will? Uh, you know, again, we're just looking for options here.
I wouldn't say that the way we trim them, it's necessary, but it's, it's, you know, not hi- highly beautified. Yep.
I I would support. Which, you know, the sentiments you're talking about there as far as giving people options, especially builders. If it is more costly, as you say, if the builder wants to bear that cost, that's their choice, in my opinion. And in some cases, it's going to be beneficial possibly, as you say, depending on the layout of particular property. In other cases, it may not, depending on. Like what the mayor is talking about for for trees or or whatever. So when it comes to to that sort of thing, I'm in favor of of people having the options to build things the way that's going to fit best into their. Particular part of the city, so.
I I think I would say that having got a little smarter about this than I was. That my preference would be to leave that still possible route, including the exception. That my honorable colleague just named. To be a design exception option that might suit a different location where we put the drainage stuff in the back and not in the front. But the typical cross sections were. The the point was to double the cross sections and have a lot more designer opportunities. But leave that one as a design exception request. I think I think that would be the preference of staff, but of course it's up to you guys. So if if it's the will of the group, we can go back and look at different cross sections and do a do over. That's that's your call.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond to one of the items you said too, we there is ways to design these to achieve the treatment you're after without trees. Trees don't have to be a requirement of for for treatment. So that's kind of more, there's kind of two questions there. One is more of a streetscape beautification question of do you want that as a city? We don't have to have trees in those planners to make the storm water approach work. So I just wanted to point that out.
Right, but the trees are required every. I I know Scott said fifty foot, but in most cases they're a lot closer than that in the in the subdivision. Anybody else?
I trying to formulate this question. So thinking through the different. Items that were proposed that made curb sidewalks or curb tight sidewalks. Less desirable. Could we mitigate those potentially? I mean, the. Planning commissioner council can work. We can all work through that more of putting in more restrictions on the style of a curb tight sidewalk to mitigate some of the issues that were that were identified. One of which I I see saying worried about a car door opening and hitting a pedestrian. Well, if we just ensured that the same overall space, if there's a. A planner there or not is is used, then you have an extremely wide sidewalk. If you do curb tight. Is that possibility?
I do know that curb tight sidewalks are required to be six foot wide rather than the standard five foot for non curb tight sidewalks.
Yeah, there's conditions like that that you could identify and make requirements of the project. If you have like a. A zone you know is going to be actively used for dropping off and picking up, you can bump out the sidewalk there. The one thing you really lose by allowing curb tight sidewalk that you really can't gain back is just the physical separation safety element that comes with having it. Having that five foot buffer between traffic and and where you're walking or where you're biking. There you can make a wider walk and people can deviate off of that, but then you're creating more impervious space that you have to deal with additional storm water.
More expensive road to.
Yeah, and then you start adding surface area, you're you're increasing cost for the amount of concrete for the road, the width of your sidewalk, and then also what you have to do for the storm water. So. There really is no way to escape that. You can certainly do case by case workarounds. Like I said, if you have very, you have specific conditions to address safety concerns, but. The point of these typical sections is they're intended to be general, right? So the goal would be to provide the general approach and then deal with the conditions that you're talking about on a case by case basis.
I know one of the other things that you put on your memo was the linear root barriers. Now, we for the last fifteen years or so have been requiring root barriers around trees that go in. Are you actually talking? Are we considering proposing linear root barriers, which would be, if I'm not mistaken, a concrete barrier? That runs the length of the. Of the right away?
Are you asking me, Mayor, if this is part of what's proposed? I don't know that this is part of the typical section. That would be more of a construction detail and specification that we would have in our engineering design standards manual. No changes proposed to that unless the team has recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, currently, no, that is not included in the typical sections. Concrete is certainly the most robust option for linear root barrier. There are other products, but. So that was just that was an op- that was included in the memo as an option that could be added to address your concerns with trees, but it is not currently in. In the the current sections that are proposed.
I believe Commissioner Wright may have a comment.
Go ahead, Chris.
I believe her mic isn't working, so her comment may not be read.
Question is, what are the costs associated with each alternative present- presented? Which design offers the least less cost to be to the city and cost of maintenance? And do linear root barriers contribute to unstable tree using lateral roots to stabilize themselves?
I'll take the first part of that, but not the second part because I don't know enough. So the question about costs associated with the alternatives, there there is no possible way to answer that. Because the the different cross sections would apply to different street widths. Each one would have its own unique issues or questions. For example, some might require power poles in certain places. Others might require trees to be replanted elsewhere or new trees or trees to be removed. It would depend on the width of the street. There are simply too many variables to be able to say. What would be the most cost effective cross section? Now, obviously, the residential street cross section is mechanically simpler. Therefore, it would be likely to be less expensive than the ones that have more features. And does anyone feel competent to talk about the tree question? I do I do not know the answer.
I I can add some context to the tree. So assuming you've you specified. Deep rooting trees and they are planted in a location where there is ample water to water them. It should not contribute to unstable trees. There are situations where trees shouldn't be planted and in the context of a project or a capital improvement project. I would certainly encourage a landscape architect's assessment on those particular places that those tend to pop up are corners where you're very restricted on multiple sides. For where you can plant the tree and as soon as you start adding root barrier, it will restrict it even more. So there's. An entire landscape architecture theory behind this that I'm not qualified to talk about as an engineer. But there are specific trees that are that should deep root. Mr. Mayor, I can see you smirking a little bit. I know it's not in every condition that it's going to work perfectly. There's always exceptions, but. Generally, you shouldn't be planting a bunch of trees that end up unstable, assuming you've selected and vetted out the appropriate trees for that.
So in summary, for me, the my problem with all this is that the cost of this is borne by the landowner, not the city of Newburgh. The city is in a position of telling you how to plant trees. Now they're telling you what kind of trees to plant. They're telling you where to plant them. And when they fail, it's your job to take them out and fix the sidewalks, fix the street if it undermined the street and then replant them the way that the city sees fit. So. That is, that is the crux of my resistance to. These blanket trees have to be in the right away there. So anybody else? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Good discussion. We'll see where it goes from here.
Whichever way you're leaning, we we do need a clear recommendation on our next course of action with the meeting coming up soon.
So for you, those of you in the planning commission, thank you very much for your time. Thanks for coming. I hope that you found this to be informative and and helpful in your deliberations and. We'll see where it goes. Go ahead.
Are you saying that you would like clear direction tonight for the next meeting?
Yes, because there's a planning commission meeting that's coming up fairly soon. So if we're punting to do different cross sections, then that doesn't happen. And if we are, because we need to come up with more cross sections, right? Or 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 what? So, yeah.
Before we go. If it's. The council wishes, I wonder if if the rest of the council would want to weigh in just something quick comment on this for the for planning. So we know the general sentiment or what people think.
I mean, I'm in support of more options. I think. If it works good, if it doesn't, it doesn't, but it's an option. So, yeah, I'm in favor of it.
I'm just more in favor of the suggestion by the city manager where it's an exception to design. So I feel about it seems like according to the professionals that were here, the experts, it seems. It's going to cost a lot. It's more maintenance heavy, so.
In my very, very, very short tenure so far in the planning commission, I've noticed that when we make things exceptions, it's a lot of effort for a developer to design in and. Put all their hopes on people like me to say yes or no to their idea. And so it seems like when you put something forth as a. Needing a conditional use permit to be put forth, it will never be put forth. If it takes too much effort to put in ahead of time. So trying to develop a whole city or a little community layout and planning for hoping that. We'll sign off on it is probably never going to happen. So it would basically remove that option.
Well, typically, the way this would be done is the way it is in our code now. The street, the cross section don't necessarily have to delineate it as long as the written text. Says as it does now that that option does exist under certain circumstances. So then it's a question of convincing our planning department that, you know, you have a viable option. The reason that I have been. I've made it pretty clear since the time that I got here that this is something that is, I think, is is important for our city. I think the. Value of the broken sidewalks warrants having options other than just what we've been doing in the past. So that's my point is I would like to see that happen.
Yeah, I I agree. I mean. Most of the time when you walk around in my neighborhood, the sidewalks are are pulled up by the trees and I. If we can get away from from doing something like that, I think we should. I just come up with something better and different than what we're doing is is what I'd like.
I think I'm inclined to agree with Derek. I know we have a lot of concerns with our current sidewalks. It's hard, though. We had just had a whole team of experts up here telling us. That there's a risk of more cost incurred to the city from a maintenance standpoint. I also, we've talked a lot about storm water, but I think also highlighting the ADA safety concerns that they highlighted is also a really important. Component to be aware of for accessibility for all members of our community too. So. We've I feel like we spent a lot of time on storm water, so I just want to call back out the accessibility component.
I would just like to remind you that the city doesn't build many sidewalks. Well, we we build ADA ramps right now. But the last sidewalks the city built, they built tight to the curb. And in a fashion that a a homeowner could not possibly do because the width isn't sixty.
Yeah, and I think what the city chose to do was an exception that worked for that space. And so I think having the. Exception like was the recommendation makes good sense.
I tend to agree with Counselor Turrison and Carmen on this one and the recommendation of the city manager and Keller team.
I know we didn't bring this as a decision item, but since we would have to build a different. Since you'd have to do a different cross section and we'd have to wait to a different meeting. I think it would be useful, Mr. Mayor, if you're all right with doing a show of hands about putting in a curb tight design. So that we know whether we need to design one. Because otherwise we. You know, we can't proceed effectively.
Sorry, quick question. My mind works slow. Jumping back, when you talked about accessibility, it reminded me that when you have a curb tight sidewalk. That could be more accessible for people getting in and out of vehicles on the curb. And when you don't have a curb type sidewalk, people. Coming in and out of those vehicles have to tramps through the foliage. We have that throughout town. I know specifically right on, gosh, oh, pull my map. Where the Wednesday market is. Every time I park to go to the Wednesday market during the summer, I've got to, you know, as a parent of some young children, got to try to find the right place to park so that my door doesn't hit the tree, not just my door, but my kid's door. And then enough to get out and get the stroller and I, you know, if it's wet, everything gets muddy. But if it was a curb tight area there like by the park right out here where we do have a lot of traffic, it's really easy to get everybody in and out. And again, if we put something through where you have to put in a conditional use to get that exception. More often than not, a builder is going to say it's not worth the the money to develop that whole plan to put it before that city's planning commission just get denied. And I I worry about that complication as well.
Just so that you know, those decisions would be made by staff before it ever comes to you. Your job is then to judge and make sure that it meets the city code. But staff would have made that decision prior to it coming to planning commission. So all in a show of hands for anybody who is interested in having a curb tight often as option as on our code. About half and half, about what I expected. Oh, I didn't. Now she got her hand up.
Thank you most kindly.
Thanks, gentlemen, lady. We appreciate it. Thanks, Chris. Sorry, I didn't realize you were up there. All right.
I like the joint session.
All right, good. Can we take just a quick break? Take about five minutes and get back in here. All right, let's continue with our meeting. Next is going to be, we're going to hear from Cory on the library surveillance policy.
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. So after bringing the surveillance policy before the council a few weeks ago. Went back and spoke with the chief and with James, had some good conversation. Some important clarifications from last time is that the. That the police department already has access to the libraries cameras. So because we're part of the same city, they have access to those already. So some of the language that was changed in here is to say that in response to a search warrant subpoena. Or court order delivered to the city by an external entity. So that's talking about external now instead of internal. So that was the biggest change that was made on the on the policy. Any questions for me? No, you've seen this pretty recently, so.
I think you could assume that we all thought that it was a very well drafted policy. Look forward to working with you on it in the future.
Thank you very much.
So next we have new business, disposal of surplus vehicles presentation.
Oh, not to interrupt Director Thomas too much, but I believe council can, if it chooses to kind of approve the library surveillance policy in its current form, or if you prefer to wait for a future meeting, either, either approach works at this point.
Russ, hang on a minute. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, Derek, go ahead.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-3989, the library surveillance policy.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve 2025-3989. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Russ Alves Public Works Director. Tonight what we're doing is giving a presentation on how we dispose of surplus vehicles and equipment. A lot of times we get asked questions, what do you do? How do you do it? What's the legal way? What's the best way to recover the investment that we put in these vehicles when they become obsolete? They become too old for our use and things like that. So I wanted to bring the council up to speed. And especially in light of the fact that we've got a large number to dispose of and the value of them is pretty good. So I wanted to kind of bring everybody up to speed and answer any questions you might have on that. Wrong button. Yeah. So the authority for the declaring it surplus is carried in the municipal code. And that authority by code is given to the city manager to declare it surplus once it's been either replaced or it's aged out or it's a piece of equipment or something that's no longer needed. And that's covered in the, in the municipal code title 2.35.270A. It's very specific that's in there. Now, kind of paraphrasing a couple pages that's in there. We have several options that we can do for disposal of surplus vehicles, equipment. We can sell it to another city or a public agency. And what I've given everybody is kind of a flyer. We have, currently have a TV truck and an old Vector that we, at a couple of conferences and short schools where there's a lot of representatives from a lot of cities and counties, we handed out flyers. Are you interested in a used, well-used but lovingly-used piece of equipment on there? So that's kind of an example of one of the things that we do to put it out there. We can publicly advertise it, an auction to the highest bidder. And that's one of the systems that we currently use. We can do an invitation to bid, open bid, in which case anyone when we advertise it can bid on it. We can do a liquidation sale through a third-party liquidator. Again, that's an auction company that can sell it for us. We can do a fixed-price sale. We can put it on a fixed price and sell it. And again, that goes through the, the bid process, but it has to meet a minimum requirement. Trade-in is one, another method, sometimes with specialized equipment and dealing with the same vendor that we obtained the new piece from. Sometimes we can get a trade-in and it just depends on the value they're gonna give you, just like everybody else going to trade your car in. You, you wanna make sure you're getting the best value back and you can't always get that dealing directly. Or we can donate it. The city manager can donate it to another governmental agency or 501(c) organization. What we use common, most commonly used is auction, public advertised auction to the highest bidder. We really don't have to, to deal with it. And we get the money. Trade-in, when we trade in a piece of equipment or sale or transfer to another city department, we've actually sold pickup truck from Public Works to police for their use with that, or donating it to another governmental organization or 501(c). So public advertised auction, we're currently have a contract with Jay Stout Auctions in Washougal, Washington. We've sold pickup trucks, cars, common mid-size equipment. One of the caveats to that is we did use gov deals in the past, which is a public auction. But we had to prepare the vehicle. We had to clean it. We had to strip everything off of it. We had to run through it. We had to be there to show it to anybody that came through to take a look at it. We had to handle all of the details on it. And by going with Jay Stout, we take our tools out of it and they take it from there. It's a cost savings and a time savings for the city to, to do that. The premium that we pay them a percentage of the sale is the same whether it was gov deals or Jay Stout. So why not let them do all the dirty work literally in preparation for that? Trade-in, one of the things we do with our loader at the wastewater treatment plant when it comes time is typically we're dealing with the same vendor and we're able to do a trade-in with that. A lot of times because it's specialized equipment and we don't have the mechanics to work on it, their mechanics from the dealers, the ones that's doing the maintenance on it. We have extensive maintenance records on all that. And most often we get the best deal back because it's a very specialized piece of equipment from a dealer. Oftentimes, like our loader could end up on Gold Rush or something up in Alaska when they sell it to somebody else. Sale to another public agency and that's what you have in front of you, a Vector. We have a 2013 Vector that we got for sale and we got our old Q's TV truck. They're very specialized and most likely a city or county are looking for these type of things, especially smaller cities. The first Vector we ever got, we bought used with that. Yes?
Or did you get the message that I sent that the city of Seletz is looking for a back truck?
I have. And if they're willing to pay what the value is, we're more than happy to sell it to them. The last TV truck we sold to the city of Yakima, when they came down and got it. One of the things you'll notice on that flyer is the extremely low hours or miles that are on those vehicles. A back truck goes, parks and all day long, runs all day long in one spot. The TV truck goes and parks and runs all day long in one spot. So when you put 13, 14,000 miles, think about it, that's 13,000 or 14,000 miles driving from the public workshop to downtown, back to the shop over and over and over again for that. Donation to another government agency or 501(c), generally it's something less than $500. Generally, it's been furniture, file cabinets. Right now, trying to give a file cabinet away. Talking with friends over in Yamhill County, they had 82 of them and they could not give a single one away to any nonprofit organization in McMinnville. They ended up going to scrap. But it's something that we can do and provide a beneficial use for that. So currently, this is the list of what we have sitting in the yard waiting to be declared surplus and go off. Now, a couple of notes. One of it is at the top, the, the Vector truck, it's, it's 100,000 on there, but actually we've had it reevaluated. It's worth 150,000. Yes, sir?
We had it reevaluated to see if we were willing to do a donation to that town. But when we found out it still had a market value of $20,000 remaining, we, we felt that was too much for a giveaway.
He's not, he's not looking for a freebie. He's looking for a decent deal on a used back truck.
I'll be more than happy to get in contact with him. But these are, these are some of the things that we have. You know, we've got a, a case that has a Gannon box in the back of it that we use for alleys, alleyways, that type of stuff. Some of the smaller stuff, you know, and this is an idea where we've gotten a source on pricing, whether it's comparable through Google or something of that nature. You know, we've got a concrete saw that we've used for years and years and years. It still runs, but our, it's a best guess what we can get out of the thing. We don't know. One of the things is the poly, poly tanks, the 66-gallon, 6600-gallon poly tanks that we replaced down at the water treatment plant. We don't know what we get for them. We actually, the last time we replaced them, a gentleman from California came up and gave us $5,000 for them. We might not get anything. We, we don't know. So it's a best guess that's, that's on there. So we're trying to take a look at it. Typically, these would go, the majority of them would go to Jay Stout. Jay Stout cleans them, prepares them. They, they do a public auction. They do a very good job in recovering the most value for it because the more they get out of it, the more they get in their percentage of payment with that. So right now, we, with the numbers changed around a little bit, we have about $350,000 worth of surplus equipment ready to go down the road. But talking with the city manager, we wanted to make sure that we got that information across to the council of how this is, how we look at it, how it's handled. You know, if anything's still of value and used to us, we're gonna use it. But one of the things we try to do with the vehicles is turn them at the optimum time to get the most value back out of them. We've, we've moved closer and closer to the end of warranty. Right now, the, the biggest recovery we can get on vehicles is when, prior to hitting the end of warranty, because of rapidly drop and lose value in that right now. Once upon a time, we sold a pickup truck for more than we paid for it. You know, so that's, that's happened. We've sold a van once more than what we paid for it. We're buying it under state contract. They're buying it at a public auction. And a lot, a lot of times, it's, it's easy to recover. So this is the list of what we have. We also have two other vehicles that are going in for destruction as part of the grant that we got through DEQ under the diesel emissions grant that paid for the electric chain hook lift truck. We're required to destroy two of our older vehicles. We have to break the frame and punch the block, engine block to get it done. We get a certificate of destruction for it. In exchange, we got $650,000 for vehicles that are worth about 25. So good deal, as far as I'm concerned. So that's the list that we have. Are there any questions on, on what we do and how we do it?
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick?
Yeah.
Is this the same process just for the entire city or is this exclusively Public Works?
This is, this is what we use for the entire city. We actually have a, a old Doug's Charger that's on this list that goes. And we do this anytime we do it. A lot of times with police and the, and the chief can confirm that, they do a trade-in, a swap with the lease agreements that they're working on. But we always try to get the most that we can back for the city and for our citizens when we're dealing with these.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the ADA ramp and sidewalk work contract.
On, Mayor and council, not really much to say about this. We think we're gonna have more ramps to do next year than the sidewalk crew can handle. So after we did a bidding process, we want to enter into a subcontractor relationship with one of the local companies so that they can build ramps at a set price. And that price that they're offering for the base year is 20% less than the rate that we've been getting lately for building ramps. So in other words, for this first year, it'll be really good. For the second year, it'll be back to market rate. For the third year, well, we'll see what the market does in three years. But it gives us some uplift. It means that we will have a guaranteed response time of four weeks. So from time of notification, we become customer number one. If we order some ramps and we need to, they're gonna come out and prioritize our work. And this is how we think we can get through the 60 that we need to do next year. The bulk of them will still be coming through our sidewalk crew. But when I just looked at the math for the number of ramps we have to do in that southern section next year, it's just too many ramps. And that's not including anything else that might come up. So, so therefore I am looking for an approval for that agreement. Thank you. And of course, it's the Miller Nash subcontractor template. Any questions?
I don't see any yet. So we have a resolution in front of us, 2025-4000. Anybody like to make a motion? Robin?
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-4000.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2025-4000. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thanks, Will.
Thank you, and I really look forward to the day when all the ramps are done and we can fix the roads without building more ramps.
So the next item on our agenda is the annual development code maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Scott Segal, Community Development Director and.
Jeremiah Cromier, Associate Planner.
This evening, we're here to provide an overview of the development code maintenance amendments that are coming before you in a public hearing consistent with the city council's policy and practices. We bring these legislative proposals to you for a work session before you conduct a public hearing. There are two ordinances, 2940 and 2941. And the reason that they're broken up in that way is the 2940 consists of changes to Title 15. That's the development code. And ordinance 2941 is one amendment to Title 12, which is the streets and sidewalks section of the code. And the way that, the reason that they're broken up in that way is the Title 15 amendments are reviewed as a land use package, a land use policy change by the planning commission and amendments to other municipal titles and chapters that are not land use regulations would not naturally go to the planning commission. So that's why they're, they're both coming before you. The planning commission did conduct a public hearing and has recommended approval of the amendments to Title 15. So they've given it their vote of support. And this evening, what we'd like to do is just provide a little bit of background and highlight eight of the changes that are more policy-oriented that we thought you would be interested in learning more about before your public hearing. Oh, I did the same thing that my esteemed colleague did. Okay. So this work implements city council goal one to create and maintain a high level of customer service. It is part of, we call it our annual development code maintenance program because we, is just in the course of our work and feedback that we receive from customers and from the public. It is part of our continuous improvement effort and fine-tuning the code, making corrections, clarifications, making sure that that operating system, if you will, for development review is working correctly. And of course, responding to changes in state law to make sure that our code implements those requirements. So that's why we're before you tonight. And that's really the purpose of this work. Now it's stalled. See if I can get this going again. See if I can get this going again. Thank, thank you, Rachel. So the, the, the work program that we, we go through is, as I said, identifying issues through application of the code and customer input. We have a standard operating procedure that we vet these code changes as they're identified by staff and the public to determine, are they in fact code maintenance or are they significant policy changes that should be part of our work program? And so we were looking for, as I said, corrections, clarifications, operational efficiency and changes that will just improve the process for, for the community is really what, what this is focused on. The planning commission reviews the code concepts. We conducted two work sessions with the commission. The first was to review the, the ideas or the concepts. And the commission provided some very important input through that process. There were some code refinements that we thought were ready to bring forward, or at least we had questions as to whether they were, they were ready. And the planning commission provided input from the community perspective. And, and as a result, some of those, I think there were a handful of changes that we pulled from the list. We're evaluating those further. Some of those might reappear as part of a larger work program. So I do want to give credit where credit's due. Your planning commission is doing the heavy lifting on this work. Next, we move into ordinance drafting and then issuing public notices and notifying the state that are proposing to make these changes. There were thirty-eight amendments altogether or, or changes, and this is generally how they, how they break out. There are eight, as I said, minor, what we believe are minor policy changes that we'd like to just share with you this evening. And there are four changes that were a result of recent legislation that we'll also discuss. So just by way of background for folks who may be listening at home, you know, what is a land use regulation? Basically, land use regulations implement the comprehensive plan. They implement the plan through identifying where uses of land are allowed, where they're permitted. They, they establish site development standards for things like parking, landscaping, lighting, and so forth. Land use regulations also provide criteria for variances, code adjustments and other exceptions and the review procedures. So some of the changes that we'll be discussing tonight are review procedures. And with the intention of making our process simpler and easier to navigate, more business friendly, we're always looking for lean style improvements that will make the process faster and less expensive. So I'll go over the first two, and these should go pretty rapidly. And we're open to questions or feedback as, as we're going along here. So please feel free to interrupt us. I'll cover the first two, and then Jeremiah's going to take the next three through eight, and then I'll kind of wrap up. So the first one here is, actually, it's two parts. And one part is looking at the, at the permit process for home occupations. And this is something that we have received feedback from home business operators questioning, why do I have to get a land use approval and a business license for simply operating a business out of my home where there's no site development, there's no additional parking, there's nothing really for the planning department to review other than the use to make sure that it is a home occupation and it meets those standards. And we do routinely review building permits for things like single-family homes and now middle housing, straight, straight through a building permit review process. There's no separate land use applications required for that. So we asked ourselves, could we apply a similar process to home businesses and simply review those at the time of business license application to make sure that they comply with zoning? And the answer was yes, that's, that's doable. It's more efficient. It saves a homeowner or business owner about two hundred and fifteen dollars for a permit, and it's just a little bit faster. So that's what's proposed there. There is also some cross referencing changes in the sign code portion of, of the ordinance. And you did receive a public comment from Mr. Robert Sopé, who I think astutely pointed out that we have some language in the, in the, I believe it's the sign code section of, or in one of these sections that we're looking at that, that says that your sign for a home occupation must comply with the sign code, but then you're not allowed to have a business sign for your home occupation. So why is that language in there? And I think we're going to be taking a closer look at that to see if we can just remove that before it comes to you for a public hearing. So your community is working on this too, and we appreciate the feedback on that. So I'll move on to the next one then, unless there were any questions about that. I think it's pretty straightforward. The second one is clarifying that residential design standards do apply to all types of development that are within planned unit developments. And so planned unit developments, planned unit development is an alternative process and, and set of standards for usually subdivisions, but also larger master plan developments that may have a residential component as well as a commercial component like Crestview Crossing. So a lot of residential development in there, there's also a commercial center. And the language in the code was not clear that, that these design standards apply to all types of housing and development, not, not just single family, or not, excuse me, not just multifamily housing, but also single family housing. And so that's the practice. That's how the code has been applied in the past, and we thought we should clarify that. And I'm bringing it to you as a policy change because one could argue, well, it's not explicitly stated in the code that these standards apply to single family housing. So we, we think you're making a change. So we just want to be transparent about that. There are different standards that will apply to single family development or different standards that apply to multifamily development that would not apply to single family. So multifamily development, you know, typically you have, you know, a parking lot or parking area that's for the development where, you know, single family homes are just going to have individual parking on site. So. And this is just a, an example of what we're talking about, PUDs and Crestview Crossing development. Are there any questions about that item before we move on? No, pretty straightforward. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Cromie.
Thank you. So the next one, policy that we're looking at amending is the mixed use in the residential professional zone. So the residential professional, professional zone, it's intended to provide a mixing of residential and professional uses, typically a medical office. We had a pre-application meeting that just came up with. And ironically enough, it had said mixed use essentially is encouraged, but the mixed use dwelling is not permitted in the residential professional zone. So this would amend that, and it would also amend the definition of mixed use dwelling instead of saying it's two separate uses, it's in the same building. And in residential districts, it says that you can't have more than one main use, although the residential professional district does allow more than one main use. So this would also fix that. Questions on that one? All right. Skip on that one, okay. The next one is flexibility for garage orientation. This is more meant for, and I'll, I'll share an example here in a second, but more meant for shared driveway easements and private streets that have side loaded garages. So your garage did not face the public street. And so what this does is it would allow a developer to still have to meet the required front setback, but the twenty-foot garage setback that currently applies to the street would apply from their access point, which is typically your shared driveway. This gives the developer a little more flexibility on the lot to have an area. And I'm going to give you an example here. So this is a fourplex with a shared driveway easement to three of the lots. And then they have the fourth one coming off the street. So in this example here on the left, if you want to look at house four, it has a twenty-foot setback to where their driveway is there, to the main driveway, and then they have a fifteen-foot front setback. If they do choose to have a garage run the street, that twenty-foot garage setback would still apply. And then if they have the side loaded garages to not have a monotonous just wall facing the street, so you're just looking at blank wall, would require, I believe it's ten percent, ten or fifteen percent of that would have to have window covering so you don't have a blank wall facing the street.
And this is an actual, this was based on some development that we're seeing in, in Kalina, right, Jeremiah, that there's a precedent for this and it's been tested?
Are any questions on that one? Okay. There's no questions on that one, I'll move on. So next one is exception to commercial zone maximum setback. And this is in the C-two and C-three district. Oh, I thought it was only C-two. So C-two is your main commercial corridor along ninety-nine. And what we found in recent developments that developers come in, the current requirement that got put in place in twenty twenty has a maximum setback of ten feet. However, on most of ninety-nine, there's a ten-foot easement in that maximum setback. And so along with other utility conflicts that preclude a developer from doing anything within that front ten feet, and so they're building right at the ten-foot line if they can or having to do a variance. It also is making new developments on existing sites that they want to expand on, cause problems, and the only current remedy is a variance. So this would allow an exception to that maximum setback where there's easements, existing buildings or other topography or dimensions causing an issue, not to have to go through the variance process and a little more developer friendly. Any questions on that one? No, I'll move on. Okay, the next one, there's just an omission in our code for mostly commercial property when in a butts a institutional zone or community facility zone. So you're like George Fox or your CPRD properties typically, there's no setback, interior yard setback from those at all in the code currently. So it's tough to interpret what that would be, and it's, it's a pretty rare case, but proposing the ten-foot for non-resident, or for, if it's non-residential and then five feet for residential. So it just clears up what setback is actually applied.
Yeah, right, Jeremiah. On that one, it doesn't actually say, it doesn't say zero, it's just omitted.
Yeah.
Where every other zone and every other relationship between a residential zone to a commercial or to an industrial or vice versa, it's explicit. But for these institutional zones and community facilities, it doesn't say. So we want to make it clear.
Yep. Any questions on that one? Okay, there are nothing, I'm going to move on. So the next one is a fence height in residential zones. So current code limits height to six feet, and building code exempts anything under seven feet. Anything over seven feet, you have to get a building permit for. Six foot's not always adequate for privacy. And so knowing even my own height, if you've seen me, I can see over a six-foot fence. Yeah, yeah. But this is also kind of in line with other cities and the building code to just kind of line up where that building permit comes in. So I think on the next slide, we have a comparison. So there's a fair amount of cities that are still at six feet. There's some that are at seven feet, including McMinnville. And there's, there's actually more than I thought that are currently allowed eight feet fences and interior yards around the local area. So let's kind of put us in the center, also line up with that building code to give some more options. Questions on that one? Okay, and then I think the last one for, Scott has some more for you here, is accessory buildings in institutional zones that are, sorry, not institutional, residential zones. So institutional uses would be your churches, your schools, park like CPRD. So current code only allows two accessory buildings in residential zones, doesn't apply to institutional zones or commercial zones. And so a lot of times what we end up running into is the schools or these churches want additional accessory buildings that limits them to the, the two. And what we found is there's not a lot of places that would take up that much room. And even with what they currently have, it's typically one, less than one percent of the lot. And so current code also requires twenty-five foot setbacks for these institutional uses for these structures, and then sixteen feet in height unless the first eight hundred feet can be up to twenty-four feet. And so this would just give them additional buildings that can be built on the property as long as the setbacks and height are met to mitigate those concerns and give them more options rather than only the two. And this is kind of example of what's already existing at some of the schools and churches out there in their current acreage, along with their number of accessory structures. So that gives them more flexibility to add additional storage or other maintenance needs buildings. Okay.
Are, most of the churches in town and schools are the institutional zone?
So, so most of the churches and schools are in residential zones currently, not in institutional zones. So this would, the residential zone only allows the two accessory buildings. This would take that away for institutional uses like schools and churches.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question, and it's not, you know, it's unexpected, actually. We had a, in another community where I worked, we had all the schools and municipal buildings and churches were all in, well, mostly in residential zones. And the planning commission with council input decided it was time to create a public facility zone, a zone that was for those uses that had the flexibility that they needed. But, you know, we're just trying to manage within the existing framework that we have, and they are primarily in residential zones. So before I say a few words about changes in state law, the other ordinance, the twenty-nine forty-one, there is just one change to the streets and sidewalks chapter that I just wanted you to be aware of, and I think our senior engineer, Mr. Music is here. If you had any questions about it, it's really, it's a change to the permit language that currently says that is, it is the duty of the city engineer to issue permits and upon request of any person to whom a permit has been issued for that, to set the grade and line stakes for the construction of the walk. And that's not a function that our city engineer does. Maybe, they may have done that at one time when they were surveying alignments for sidewalks, but that's now performed by the contractor and it's inspected by city engineering staff. So that is the one change to Title twelve. The changes resulting from amendments to state law, well, they're all about housing. So if you've been following the legislature, you know that they've been very active on housing and increasingly preempting our authority to regulate that through our zoning. So one of the changes that comes from ORS ninety-point-one-one-two and ORS ninety-one-ninety-seven point oh-one-five is defining or restricting how we define household for the purposes of housing and references to family that you'll see throughout municipal codes are now, we're not permitted to define that in terms of blood relationship and, and kin. So that, there are changes to our code that are implementing that. We still have regulations on density and lot coverage and all of the other requirements that we have for family housing. There are other changes here from ORS one-ninety-seven point one-nine-five and point oh-one-five that limit when we can require an application for housing to go to a public hearing. We have language in our code currently that allows for a public hearing to be, for a housing application to be referred to a public hearing, and that's not with an appeal, that's just referred by staff. And that's not with an appeal. That's just referred by staff presumably. And that's not permitted under state law. We also have language in our code currently that requires a public hearing for an application for multifamily housing. And that's not allowed either if the housing, if the, if that residential use is permitted outright in our code or permitted without a conditional land use review. If we have, if a conditional use permit is required as it is for some housing, principally in commercial zones, we can still require a public hearing for that. It's a conditional use permit. But for other types of housing, we're not allowed to do that. So there are changes proposed as part of this package that will correct that. The other change from ORS is really just a change in the numbering that the state adopted. And so we're updating our code to be consistent with that. And that concludes my presentation. Were there any questions back to this? If you had any, there, there will be more changes coming from the state legislature, some of which are not, either not in effect or operational yet. They were adopted in 2025 and we're waiting for LCDC to go through rulemaking or they're just not in effect yet. And so we're not required to amend our code. Some of the changes, we will not, we will recommend not amending our code because they sunset. They were adopted at a certain point and then they're no longer operational after a certain date. So in consultation with the city attorney, we'll be working through those to recommend the most prudent pathway on that. So. And that does conclude our presentation tonight. No actions requested of the council. Public hearing is tentatively scheduled for November 17th. If you wish to proceed, we will issue public notices for that and be prepared for, for a hearing.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel, we're taking no action on 2940 today. That's coming back and.
Okay, thank you.
No actions. Well, that concludes our, the business that we had scheduled for today. Is there? I guess the meeting is adjourned.